I will call the June 23, 2020, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our guests. Remind you, if you want to address the board specifically and to be placed on the agenda, you must contact the county administrator's office at least seven days in advance of any meeting to be placed specifically on the agenda. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda Item Matters presented by the public that will be later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome everyone. We need to take care of one little housekeeping measure as far as our agenda is concerned today, since there were several items in addition in following Robert's Rules of Order. I will need a motion and a second, and of course, we'll vote to accept the revised agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we will declare the revised agenda the one that we will follow today. First item of business that we will consider is Agenda Item Number Five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Items of Consent be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. We have Agenda Item Number Six, a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grunstaff. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Long time no see. This is a report for month end in May 29, 2020, personal property collection. As of May 29, we had collected 92.15% of the 2019 personal property taxes. The amount collected during the month was $158,306. Real estate collection, as of May 29, we collected 93.76% of the 2019 real estate taxes. During the month, we collected $163,997. Since the 1st of January 2020, TACS has collected $361,000. Our debt set off, we've collected $116,541. So far in June, we've had 11 DMV stops, May 16 stops, and in the last three months, that number's been lower since people can't go to DMV to renew their tag, but hopefully we'll catch up by the end of the year. Friday, June 19, we had treasurer summons scheduled. It was postponed from April, and we had sent out 54 summons. Of 54 summons, eight paid in full, 17 set up payment plans and arrangements, four weren't served, one was deceased, two were incarcerated, and four out of state, so we'll work on the remaining ones of that. Also, we had a decree of sale hearing yesterday in Henry County Circuit Court. We'll have between 20 and 25 parcels at a judicial sale the last week of July, and hopefully we'll get that date now down by the end of the week.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Grunstaff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Seven has been struck from our original agenda. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, a consideration of a proclamation ending the local declaration of emergency related to flooding on May 24, 2020. Mr. Hall.
On May 24, 2020, our office declared a local state of emergency in response to the significant flooding that occurred in the county. Board Supervisors affirmed that declaration at its meeting on May 26. The emergency as a result of that flooding is now over, and the board must officially rescind the emergency declaration, and we have prepared a proclamation for you to consider approval, and it's in your board packet.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board in regard to taking action on ending the local declaration of emergency?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the attached proclamation rescinding the declaration of emergency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero. Mr. Hall. Agenda Item Number Nine, preparation of the FY 2020-2021 Henry County budget, and as part of that, there are some very specifics to this. The board has it as a part of its working papers, and a roll call vote will be required. Mr. Hall.
Board Supervisors, at your May 26 meeting, adopted the FY 2021 total county budget. This included setting of tax codes and the adoption of the school budget. However, no county funds can be expended or obligated until an appropriation has been made attached to the draft appropriations resolution. It reflects categorical appropriation based on previous board decisions regarding those appropriations. And if you'll scroll down to the appropriations resolution, as Mr. Adams referred, you'll see some changes that are marked in there. Overwhelmingly, these are just date changes, grammatical changes, that sort of thing. There is one substantive change under Section Nine that we're recommending, and this is tied primarily to the construction of the jail. With that large of a project, change orders can, if we have to come back to you with every change order, could clearly have an impact on the timing of that, so we are recommending a change to where it would read under Section Nine, "The county administrator may approve construction change orders to contracts up to an increase of 25% or $100,000, whichever is greater, and approve all change orders for reductions of contracts." And then we would continue to inform you within three days of any approval of a change order that exceeds $20,000. We just feel like that will enhance the timeframe for the jail construction and move that project at a quicker pace. The rest of the corrections are really just date changes, and then under Section Twenty, we added the authorization for the county administrator to appropriate revenue generated, and we added the county fair in there, which we already do for Smith River Fest and Parks and Rec and things like that. And then under Section Twenty, we took out several of the consultants that we have used in the past and added a couple in there that we are now using on a variety of issues. So we tried to clean that list up for you a little bit. But under Section Twenty, as you see, the ones in red are being removed with the line through them, and then the ones in red with no line are the ones that we're recommending get added to. And essentially, those are really the only changes of substance in that appropriations resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. The board's had an opportunity to review this. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to this appropriations resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the appropriations resolution via roll call vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a typo. I think there are two Section Twenties.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It must have been bulk rate. Maybe we got those at Sands or something.
Did you really? That's good.
We'll correct that.
Any other corrections or any other things to point? Okay, with that, Mr. Hall, will you poll the board for a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Zaire?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
And Mr. Adams?
Yes. Great, thank you. Motion carried as far as official record. Okay, we will now take up financial items under Agenda Item Number Ten, and there are numerous, and we'll move through these as best we can. Ten A, an additional appropriation referencing transfer of FY 20 funds for capital improvement items. Mr. Hall.
During our recent budget presentation, we recommended using current year funds of $445,600 to purchase the following needed capital items. That's eight new, eight replacement patrol vehicles for the sheriff's office at a cost of $301,600, and personal protective equipment, air packs for public safety at a cost of $144,000. These will be essentially the only capital items that we'll move forward with, and these are being paid for out of current year, not next fiscal year monies.
What's the pleasure of the board in regard to this additional appropriation and transfer of FY 20 funds?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of approval of the transfer for current year funds as detailed on attached transfer receipts for the purchase of capital items as outlined above.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten B, an additional appropriation referencing utility lines to the new restroom facility at Smith River Sports Complex. Mr. Hall.
Staff, I'm sorry. Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $7,273 to cover the cost of extending the water and sewer lines to the new restroom facility at the Smith River Sports Complex. The restrooms are part of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail, Section 6B, and revenue for this appropriation was available from a Harvest Foundation grant and from county operating fund.
Okay, in regard to this additional appropriation, what does the board recommend?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the additional appropriation of $7,273 to cover the cost of extending the water and sewer lines at the Smith River Sports Complex.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten C, an additional appropriation referencing Children's Services Act Programs Fund. Mr. Hall.
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of $350,000 to cover overages in the Children's Service Act and CSA program fund. Staff recommends using $80,000 from the board's contingency funds and $270,000 from other revenue sources to cover the overages. The cost of providing services to certain at-risk youth continues to escalate, and there has been a higher number of youth placed in therapeutic foster care in recent months, and both of these factors have resulted in expenditures exceeding the budgeted amount. We have with us today Amy Rice, who's the Director of the Department of Social Services, and also Robin Turner, who's CSA Coordinator, and they will attempt to explain to you concisely how and why this happens.
Good afternoon. I will do my best to make this concise. It is a complex program. The Children's Services Act was put in place in 1993. It was created in an effort to better serve the children and families in the community. It took the funds that were specifically dedicated to social services, to the school system, and to juvenile justice, and put those funds into a large pool in order to bring the experts to the table to talk about the family as a whole. So that brings social services, your court service system, we have parent representatives, and we also have fiscal representatives from the county. There are two multidisciplinary teams who oversee the services and the funding. One is called the Family Assessment Planning Team, or FAT. They specifically listen to each case in depth to hear what the child's needs may be, whether they are mental health-related, or substance abuse-related, or due to abuse or neglect in the home. They then send those items for funding to the Community Policy Management Team, or CPMT. That is where Mr. Wagner sits, Mr. Jones sits, and Ms. April Evan sits for social services. We have our court services folks there as well. They are looking at the appropriateness of the service and also keeping an eye on the fiscal piece. There is a tiered match rate for the locality. The idea is if a child is served in their home and in their community, they have better long-term results. When we talk about at-risk youth, we are looking at youth who are more likely to drop out of school, they are more likely to commit criminal acts as adults, so their outcomes tend to be poor, and this is an attempt to repair whatever damage may have occurred. So the tiered system says that if you serve the children and families in the community and in their home, the child has better outcomes. So the state gives the locality a lower match rate for the services provided in the locality. That's a 14% match rate. If a child is placed outside of the home in a different type of care, therapeutic foster care, for instance, that's a 28% match rate, so much more expensive. There are neighbors, just to give you some comparative data, across the state, in two years, the CSA budget has seen a $36 million increase. Our neighbors in Franklin County, for example, served 311 children through CSA and spent an average of $22,000 per child. In Danville, they served 146 children at $29,000 per child. Those expenses for those two localities are specific for special education private day placements. Here in Henry County, we are seeing an increase in therapeutic foster care. We served overall, excuse me, 116 children and spent $12,000 per child. Total cost for Franklin are $6.5 million, Danville is $4.2, and Henry County is 1.3. We are seeing the increase. We are seeing younger children with more significant needs, so we are serving them longer. Let's see, the tiered match rate has not changed since 2008, when the state made the change for out-of-home placements to be a higher match rate. As you are considering your legislative agenda this year, I would suggest that you advocate to have the tiered match rate reviewed. In 2014, the Department of Juvenile Justice completed a transformation that shifted significant costs from the state to the locality. That has not been addressed and could potentially be addressed in the matched tiered rate. Also, the Department of Social Services has an act coming forward called Family First Act, not to be confused with Family First Coronavirus Act. This act was to go into place July 1 this year, but it has been delayed until January. It will give us an opportunity to pull down federal dollars to pay for preventative services, so hopefully that will be a cost savings once we can get the act up and running. Our staff at the agency are prepared to take those cases on to avoid that local cost. So was that simple enough? Do you all have any questions? Because I do have the CSA Coordinator here, if you have specific program questions.
I may have missed part of your conversation as far as, and thank you for giving us percentages and some direction as to what the board would need to be a part of in recommending to the legislature. But as far as the higher number placed in recent months, is there any measurement of that versus COVID-related at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
Our numbers, so our overall foster care numbers have averaged between mid-40s to 60 and fluctuated in between, but rarely going over 62. So we haven't seen the increase there, but when you have a child whose behaviors are bordering on juvenile delinquency or assault, among other things, we cannot place those children in a regular foster home. That is the therapeutic piece, where the foster parents are actually licensed to provide therapeutic services in the home. Unfortunately, sometimes we're not able to maintain them there, and they have to go to residential, which is more expensive. However, we do not see that in this locality, like we do other places.
Thank you. Dr. Morgan?
And I probably should know this. So in our current budget, it's about $1 million?
$1.33 last year.
So now we're up to 1.65?
The cost is 1.65.
Right. And other students that you have placed, how many are special ed day, if you know? And I'm just curious, as a former special education person, do you have any residential kids?
I know we have one foster care child who is in residential. The private day number, I don't know off the top of my head. It is very low. Henry County schools do a phenomenal job at educating children in the school. I cannot brag on them enough.
I think we have six. I'm almost positive we have six off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
So in the upcoming years, what do you project the increase is going to be per year? Do you have any idea on that, or do you not?
I wish I did. There is no way to know what types of needs we'll be seeing from the children. I realize how difficult that is on a budget, from a budget perspective. The two teams do a really good job, the two multidisciplinary teams do a really good job of trying to serve children in the least restrictive environment. We have seen our prevention cases and our CPS cases go from 20 to 103. So we are really trying to provide the service on the front end, rather than being reactive in a foster care situation.
Okay. Now, does this have to do a lot with some of the state changes that's being made, or in the increase, or just?
So the DJJ transformation closed the juvenile correctional facilities. They only left open two. So what happens at that point is typically the child's needs are significant, and we will see the court service unit recommend the child come into foster care. So at that point, the CSA dollar is paying it and not the state dollar that would have paid on a commitment. Not saying the transformation was negative, but they did not allow for assistance on the local side for that. And I believe they completed that between 14 and 15.
I have a question. Do you know, do you have an average of how many years a child stays in service care?
Our length of stay is down. Do you know the LOS? I did. I looked at the percentage. I could get that to you from Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Another thing is, we suffer from a little bit of lack of competition. So if we want to, if we want to serve our children in the home, because that's the best outcome, we're going to look for a provider locally, and if you're in Richmond, you know, people are competitive. Here, you know, it's like, well, there's only one expert who can provide this service, and they charge this much, and, you know, that's what we have. And yet, that's still probably a savings in placing them in Richmond and having the service provided, because that's more expensive. But it can be quite expensive, whereas if we could get some competition and have multiple providers, it would be a savings to the community.
Mr. Wang, do you have something?
You heard Ms. Rice say that our cost is tremendously lower than our surrounding jurisdictions, and a big part of that is because of what Dr. Martin said, our school system does a great job of containing those costs, our court services unit, social services. The leading CSA effort is Ms. Robin Turner, so I didn't want this effort to go by without recognizing her as the CSA Coordinator, and the Assistant Department of Social Services Director is a Evans, which previously served as a CSA Coordinator. So I just want to take a moment to recognize their effort, because they do a tremendous job of making sure that the children are placed in appropriate care and at the best cost possible.
Thank you, bud.
And we will make sure to bring this item to you as part of your legislative agenda, to try to get that tiered match rate changed. But I'll just say again what Dale said, these folks do a phenomenal job, and it is a thankless job. But when you compare us to surrounding localities, we are blessed to have the folks doing this that are doing it for us. It's truly not a job, it's an application. They got to do it, because it's the right thing to do.
This was an excellent presentation and very concise, the best I've heard. Good job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, I think the board has got adequate background material to make a decision on this additional appropriation. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the additional appropriation of $350,000 to the Children's Services Act Program Funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten D, an additional appropriation referencing housing inmates for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve the transfer of funds totaling $210,000 to cover expenses related to housing inmates at other facilities. Our budget this year included about $900,000 for this task, and it anticipated that this expenditure will reach 1.1, slightly over 1.1 million dollars for the fiscal year. Our FY 21 budget includes $1,200,000 for this line item, and let me also point out that when the jail, when the new facility opens, this cost will go away, which will clearly help us operate the new jail, and it also may actually turn into somewhat of a revenue stream, because the folks we've been paying to take ours, we can start taking some from other folks. But Sheriff Perry is here, should you have any questions about this item?
Right, with this and with the background explained, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of transfer appropriations of $210,000 to cover the additional cost of housing inmates at other facilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question. What's our current population at the local jail?
Once we came into the area of COVID-19, I think we've probably been around a 160 mark to 150 mark. We've lowered it some. We've utilized home electronic monitoring where we can. We also discovered through our budget hearing through this that we're going to try to utilize that a little bit more to save some money, but once again, it isn't, while it is a savings in being economical, but it is a monumental savings. But I think, without actually checking pinpoint, probably around a 160 to 165 mark.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Other discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten E, an award of contract referencing food for inmates at the county jail for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to award a contract to J.L. Culpepper &amp; Company Incorporated to supply food for the Henry County Jail. This contract does not stipulate a total expenditure amount because of the fluctuation in numbers of inmates. However, Sheriff Perry estimates that the overall contract will be approximately $160,000. Staff feels that even though there is no set amount to be spent in this contract, it is good practice for the board to award the contract because of the size of the potential expenditure, and the purchasing department concurs with this process as outlined.
In regards to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board award the contract to J.L. Culpepper &amp; Company Incorporated as requested.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten L, an award of contract referencing the housing inmates for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve monthly expenditures during FY 21 associated with housing inmates at the Blue Ridge Regional Jail and the New River Valley Regional Jail. Each of these facilities provides housing for a portion of the overflow inmates from the county jail here. Expenditures for housing inmates at each of these facilities is likely to exceed $20,000, which requires approval by the board supervisors, and as we said previously, the FY 21 budget includes 1.2 million dollars for the outsourcing of housing of inmates.
In regards to this contract, what is the board's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of monthly expenditures associated with housing inmates at the Blue Ridge Regional Jail and New River Valley Regional Jail.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is a lot of money coming to the sheriff's department. I think the sheriff should surrender his passport.
Just teasing thing.
Any other comments or discussions? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten G, an award of contract for physician services for the sheriff's office. Mr. Hall.
Sheriff Perry is requesting the board to award a contract in the amount of $24,000 to Dr. Edna E. Gordon for physician services for inmates during FY 21. This is an approved renewal of the existing contract. Dr. Gordon has provided these services to the jail for the past several years.
In regard to the awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract of $24,000 to Edna E. Gordon for physician services for inmates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Mr. Hall. Ten H, an award of contract referencing personal protective equipment, or air packs in this case, for the Public Safety Department. Mr. Hall.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the board to award a contract in the amount of $130,030 to Municipal Emergency Services for 18 air packs and the associated equipment. Air packs are essential personal protective equipment used for firefighting and hazardous material incident responses. Pricing is based on Stafford County's contract, and funding for these items are part of the capital improvements budget that you earlier voted to accept earlier in this meeting. And Mr. Tatum is here, should you have any questions?
In regard to awarding of this contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation of awarding contract to Municipal Energy Services for the amount of, excuse me, Municipal Emergency Services in the amount of $130,030 for air packs and associated equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one quick. Hey, excuse me, Mr. Tatum, these, these air packs, these, these are something mandatory by the state?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are these mandatory by the states, or?
For firefighting equipment, yes. They, that's what the firefighter wears when they go into an atmosphere with low oxygen levels, such as a burning building. such as a burning building, build with smoke. That's the primary use of the fire structure, right?
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Mr. Hall. All right, we have a couple of items that were added today. And there is some background material in front of the board for ten I, an additional appropriation referencing storm, storm damage repairs at the Philpott Marina. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars needed to make repairs to a failing slope at the Philpott Marina. During the storm event of May twenty-four, heavy rains caused the slope adjacent to the parking lot to fail. So, repairs are needed to ensure the integrity of the parking lot and the safety of visitors to the marina. Staff has identified available funds in the current Parks and Recreation budget to cover this repair. But since the marina is a separate cost center, the appropriation must be approved by the board. We did approach the Corps of Engineers and tried to convince them that this was their expense. And they said, no, it's yours.
Right.
Did we have anything in our contract with them to cover any of this stuff?
Not specifically, no, sir. And as you know, when you interpret a contract, it's interpreted to your benefit.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the additional appropriation of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty. It's noted on the attached appropriation sheet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Mr. Hall.
Excuse me, Mr. Hall, did, did, did we have any other damage to the marina on this call? It rained, it come up Saturday?
No, it raised the gangway considerably. It gives you access to the store and that sort of thing. But we had cleared out personnel and some.
I was, I was right there.
Well before that.
On the dock when it rained.
Once it receded, we had some cleaning to do, but nothing of rest.
All right, thank you. Ten J, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing the Virginia Information Technology Agency grant for the nine-one-one center. Mr. Hall?
J.R. Powell, our director of the Marshall Henry County nine-one-one communications center, is asking the board to approve an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars received from the Virginia Information Technology Agency grant. The funds will be used as part of a multi-year project to upgrade call handling equipment in the nine-one-one center. Additionally, funds for the project have already been appropriated as part of the FY twenty-one budget. In addition, Mr. Powell is asking the board to award a sole source contract in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars, fifty-seven cents to Mobile Communications of America Incorporated for the purchase and installation of the call handling equipment. And our purchasing office has okayed the sole source part of this. And Mr. Powell is with us, should you have any questions?
In regard to the additional appropriation and award of contract, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the additional appropriation of thirty thousand received from the VITA grant and the award of contract to Mobile Communications of America in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents for call handling equipment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Mr. Hall. That takes us to agenda item number eleven, a discussion of CARES Act fund and spending requirements. Mr. Hall, are you going to do it from there or wherever you prefer? You. I'm all allowed to sit down. Okay, that's great.
The CARES Act money, as you probably already know, is federal money that flowed through the Commonwealth to help localities react and mitigate impacts from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Henry County has received four point four million dollars as their part of the CARES Act fund. And after a public hearing at your six o'clock session, you'll be asked to appropriate that money. This money comes with some strings that are clearly outlined and a lot of vagueness as to how we can proceed outside of those strings. Staff has worked a lot on trying to figure out how to do this. Darrell Jones and Richard Stanfield, Dale and myself have both put considerable number of hours into figuring out our path forward. We do know these are a couple of the rules. We can go back to March one and capture costs associated with their response. We have to have whatever we're going to spend spent and in place. The product has to be in place by December thirtieth. So, not just appropriated, not just a contract, but it's got to be in place, which clearly is a very small window of opportunity. Whatever we don't spend, we must return to the Commonwealth, which will then return it to the federal government. Another aspect of this is that while we have some directions on how to spend it, some of the other directions we have not gotten clear clarity on. And I think that's on purpose. I think the Commonwealth is afraid of approving or saying, yes, you can, without true guidance from the federal government. So, what we may find ourselves in, I don't think we're going to do this because we're going to try really hard not to do it. But if we spend CARES Act money on something that is ultimately decided to not have been eligible for CARES Act money, then that amount will be taken from any, from the next state allocation that we get. We don't have to necessarily pay it back, we just don't get our next state allocation. We'll get it, but it'll be minus the money that they say we did not spend correctly. So, we are being very careful with this. We are talking to our peers all over the Commonwealth. Everybody's a little hesitant. One of my peers likened it to being in a dark room and not knowing where the furniture is. We're all going to stub our toe at some point. But we have some ideas that we would like to roll out to you today on how to proceed with this. And later on, after I get through with my remarks, you'll have an item that we actually will ask you to approve or to award a contract on. But we have come up with several ideas and these are fluid. And we will hopefully have several more ideas on how to tap into that money as we move forward. But the first thing we want to talk about today or to announce is that we have initiated with your blessing a small business grant program. We're calling it the CARES Act, Henry County CARES Act Grant Funding Program. And you have in front of you some details on that, some of the requirements that we will have in place and the application that will be available. And I'll just run through the front, the first page on some of the requirements for this grant program. And this is a grant, this is not a loan. Our small business grant program is designed to assist Henry County businesses working through issues created by the COVID nineteen pandemic and its impact. This will be limited, our money will be limited to Henry County businesses only that employ thirty or fewer full-time in the county. The business has a current Henry County business license and is current on county taxes. There will be only one grant per business. And they must have experience and also demonstrated to us a direct impact from COVID nineteen. Couple more there about LLCs being eligible, so proprietorships. Any entity that's already received CARES Act funds from any other grant program, I'm going to think specifically of the Harvest Foundation Program, which was announced previously. They will only receive our grant after all of the other applications are considered. We'd rather have people not double up, we'd rather try to reach as many as we can. If we have money to double up, then certainly we will do that. We have two levels of grant. If you have between one and ten full-time employees, your maximum grant would be two thousand, five hundred dollars. If you have eleven to thirty full-time employees, your maximum grant would be five thousand dollars. Use of the grant funds, they're outlined there, but it must be COVID-related. You can't ask us to buy a new hot tub for your office. I'm not sure how you can connect that to COVID. But there are some items there that are specifically said that are eligible. E-commerce activities, marketing plans on how to get back to business, website development, technology that you need to purchase to help you overcome whatever you lost. It could be telecommuting equipment, it could be point of sale equipment at your business, that sort of thing. We will cover rent and utilities. Any kind of enhancement to your physical structure like Lexiglas partitions and that sort of thing. Restaurants who lost some spoiled food, we would allow that as an allowable case. Legal work with the exception of any filing for bankruptcy, we're not going to pay for that. But any kind of other legal work, we would recommend that that be included. Accounting and then kind of a catch-all, any other conditions of eligibility and use of grant funds as directed by the committee, which is formed by the Board of Supervisors. And we'll get to that committee here in a second. Applicants must provide a dollar amount of their loss in their business as of the day of the application that we receive and certify the claimed losses based on COVID nineteen. If the applicant is found to have provided fraudulent information in the application, we will reclaim that grant and prosecute if we see fit. The committee that we have formed is made up of the following folks. County administrator, the deputy county administrator, the county director of finance, county deputy director of finance and a representative for the Marshall Henry County Economic Development Corporation. That will be Valerie Harper, who runs their small business section. And we reserve the right to request any additional documentation that it deems necessary, that we deem necessary from an applicant. And at the bottom of that page, this was printed off of our website. Applicants will have the ability to go to our website and fill it out online or they can print it and then mail it to us. And we'll handle it that way. We try to keep the application as simple as possible. And that's why we reflected on the back two pages of this document that you have in front of you. Outlines what I was saying previously. Applicants will need to provide us a current W nine. And they're also allowed to give us any additional information on a separate piece of paper, a separate document that they wish to enhance their case. Grant funds will be distributed on the first time, first served. And then we created an email account there for folks to send their application and supporting documents. And that is h.c.cares@co.henry.v a.us. So, that's a quick synopsis of our business grant proposal. We propose putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this program initial. If we get through it and it's successful and we feel a need to add more money out of the CARES Act, we would bring that back to you and get your okay to put more money in. We, I want to spend the money. I want to spend it correctly, but I want to spend it. So, if we have to replenish this grant program, we would certainly be willing to do that. I have a couple of other things I want to get to you, but are there any questions about the grant program? I would run without anything of that nature. Okay. Couple of other things that we want to do initially with our money. I think there is a real need to help our citizens pay utility bills during this period, particularly with folks who may not have gone back to work yet or haven't gone back at a full rate that they left. So, we recommend that we set up a fund with social services and put two hundred thousand dollars in that fund. They have an existing emergency fund specifically for county residents. And we would augment that by adding two hundred thousand dollars to it. We would encourage anyone who has a utility bill that they can't pay to go to social services. Ms. Rice has graciously agreed to manage that part of it for us and demonstrate their need for that utility bill. And then social services would write a check in that amount directly to the utility so that it gets paid. So, that could be AEP, that could be gas company, that could be PSA bills, any kind of utility. We would set that up. I know last month we talked about accelerating the payments to the volunteer rescue and squads and fire departments. What we would like to do in lieu of that, we would still make the payments as we have to, as we go through the year, but use a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of this to allocate to the departments based on their COVID work. They've done COVID work every day when they go out to answer a call. And I think just as importantly, they have not been allowed or had the time to do fundraisers. They haven't had the ability to concentrate on that. So, we would set aside a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and distribute it evenly among the squad.
How did you say that was fire and rescue?
So, you were talking about just the rescue squads or?
No, fire and rescue.
Fire and rescue. So, you're taking a hundred and thirty thousand and splitting that evenly up?
That's right. We know we can use it to pay for PPEs and masks. And we're already putting those expenses into this process. We know we need to upgrade our technology. When we were forced to telecommute, we had some trouble having enough equipment for folks who needed to work at home. And so, we hope to address that and we'll address that later specifically with an award of contract that you have later in the agenda. We have the ability, not the mandate, but the ability to share some of this money with any town that is located within your jurisdiction. Don't have to, but we're highly encouraged to do that according to the playbook. So, Mr. Wagner reached out to Mayor O'Dear at County Ridgeway. And we're going to supply enough funding to them or purchase for them, I guess, three personal computers for the use of their part-time staff and also allocate fifteen hundred dollars to them for various cleaning efforts within their buildings and anything else in the County Ridgeway. So, that will be part of that as well. All of this is dependent on the public hearing at six o'clock and your acceptance of the CARES money. And then we will proceed with setting up these specific categories that I've mentioned. This is a fluid list. We will be looking at other ways to spend the money. We do think there is a mechanism within the rulebook to award, I call it combat pay, maybe not the best phrase, but to award emergency pay to frontliners, public safety folks, those sort of folks, if they can demonstrate or if we can demonstrate that the majority of their time during this period has been spent on COVID-related items. So, we think we can work through that at some point to produce stipends for folks that we can categorize in that relatively narrow category. But there are other things we want to do, we want to do things to this building. Our restrooms are circa nineteen seventy-six. We're hopeful that we can remove door knobs, make touchless water faucets, sensors on the toilets, you don't have to touch anything. We think we can use some of this money for that and we'll proceed with that. But that's a little bit down the road. That's essentially what we're looking at. I'll ask, I'll answer any questions you have about it. We don't want to spend the money frivolously, but we won't, don't want to leave it on the table either. Quite frankly, there are some localities that are trying, are planning to spend money on things. I don't know how in the world they're going to get them approved. But I don't know, maybe it's, maybe they do things differently. But the significant amount of money, we should never lose sight of the fact that it's still taxpayer money, no matter who gave it to us. And we will spend it judiciously, but we will spend it on things that we think we need, both now and in the future. Any questions about any of that?
You said the total budget was four point four?
Slightly over four point four million dollars, yes, sir.
And you probably may have a million and a half here.
We, we have an internal accessible site for department heads to put things in.
Good.
And I think the last time I totaled it up, it was less than two million dollars. And I have reached out to Sandy Strayer. They also have CARES Act money on schools. Their requirements are much more labor-intensive than ours. I'm not sure when they're going to get their money. But I've told her that as school ramps back up, that they feel like they need some PPEs, masks or whatever, that I'd be willing to tap some of our money to get started. So, we'll, we'll see if that comes to.
Now, the funds have actually been received?
School systems.
Ours.
Ours have, yes, sir. They're in, they're in the bank. If you tell us you don't want it, we got to send it back. But yeah, we physically have that money in our account.
And so, this account's got to be done by December?
December thirtieth. You have to reconcile everything that you've done and prove that you did it and it's finished. And at some point, probably during the auditing process, we'll have to answer questions as to whether this was an allowable expense. We think we can, all the things that I've outlined here and some of the things that we have, not some of that, all the things we have on our list, I think we could certainly justify that as an expenditure. So, yeah, we'll be prepared to do that.
You know, you mentioned the rescue squads and the fire departments, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Do you think it's possible that at the end of your figure, that there is some more that can be allocated to the rescue squads and fire departments?
I absolutely think so. I'd like to get through this first wave first. And as they continue to show COVID-related expenses or lack of revenue as they move forward, then perhaps we can go back and address that. And one of the things I should have said upfront, one of the rules, one of the few rules is that we, as a locality, cannot use this money to replace lost revenue. In other words, if we have a fifteen percent reduction in our meals tax, we cannot use any of this money to backfill it.
Right.
Quite frankly, I think that's wrong. I think we suffered as a locality just as much as individuals have suffered or individual businesses have suffered. We certainly suffered to a level two. But so far, federal government has refused to snip that strength. I know that they're still being asked to and it may change, but right now, we can't do that.
Well, and you know, and the reason I say, you know, you just mentioned it. Well, and the reason I say, you just mentioned it, you know, the rescue squads, most of the Medicare pay is almost stopped coming into most of the rescue squads, and that's a big chunk of money. Some of these squads are having to fight, you know, so. But I can see that you're saying that's not to replace that missing money Medicare didn't pay, so, yeah.
The rescue squads did get a check from Medicare.
They did?
As far as the CARES Act. I don't remember the exact number, but Henry County got 40, approximately 45,000. And I think the five other rescue squads got about the same amount.
Okay. We had a board meeting last Monday, and we hadn't received it last Monday. Okay, good.
A refund from Medicare is held in cash.
Good.
Under the combat pay part of it, could it be used to supplement any first responders that had come down with it and was out of work?
I don't really know. Okay, go ahead.
So for any of the employees, which includes public safety and law enforcement that fall under the Family First Act that requires us to pay someone if they're exposed to COVID, pay for their test and that type of stuff, we're already charging some of those costs toward that line item to offset that. For example, if an employee is quarantined, if the health department says an employee needs quarantine for 14 days, we're required by the Federal First Act to pay them while they're out of work. So we can use this CARES Act money to cover that cost. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Only for county employees, but we can't use it for volunteers.
Can't, volunteers, yeah, that's, I was.
We've had to do that already. I mean, we've had quite a few cases where no fault of their own, an employee, they had had to quarantine because of a family member, or, you know, a call they ran or something was exposed, potentially exposed, and they had to quarantine for 14 days, and they were able to continue to pay, regardless of.
What does, doesn't the volunteer rescue squads have the CARE Act on the volunteer, far as through the insurance? That would cover?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, you know, what he was talking about, and you said that the volunteers are not represented through the county farce, through that CARES Act. But I was thinking that the rescue squad had insurance or?
Is it line of duty, that's what we're talking about?
Line of duty, there you go.
Right, this.
I'm sorry, yes, you hit it.
Unless the individual department had their own policy for workers' compensation or out-of-work type.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I hit it rough.
Now, they could use that time, if a volunteer lost wages because of an exposure, toward justification for use of the CARES Act that we're going to give them.
Right.
That would be, things in my mind, seems like a justifiable cause.
Okay.
With the Speedway site being referral only and a lot of the places that are doing tests and being referral from a doctor only, would it be worthwhile to have like a test site that anybody can go to and you don't need a referral? Because I know a lot of people don't have doctors. If they can go get tested one time and just clear their head, clear their conscience?
I plan to pose that question to the folks who ran the speed, or running Speedway. It's going to close, I think, Monday, is that? And I haven't heard back yet, but to be honest, I just sent it to them like minutes before the meeting.
Right.
So we can ask that question. I do know that CBS and Ridgway is now a drive-up test site. And certainly, local providers can test as well.
I think those are still referral only, though, they have to be referred by a doctor. And I think it might be worthwhile to get some literature to send out to like English, Hispanic people, everybody, just to kind of let them know where they can go to get a test, which doctors they might need to go to to get referred. I think a lot of people are afraid to go to the doctor.
They are, and we have had that issue, and we're trying to do much more of a bilingual outreach.
Right.
I think another issue with the testing site, quite frankly, and Matt could chime in here, the folks who are working there are exhausted.
Right.
A lot of them, they're doing it on their days off and their free time. We, quite frankly, had trouble getting enough people to work it. The folks who have done it since it started are pretty wiped out.
Is the health department contributing in any way to resources?
Their PIO is usually onsite.
That's it? Gotcha.
Matt, anything you missed or couldn't say?
The county staff that worked the test site, the law enforcement folks, and the public safety folks, you know, we're still paying those, and we're counting that toward the CARES Act as well.
So we're basically, between us and Harvest, we're funding all the costs and?
Absolutely.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And not just funding the cost, but funding the person.
Right, right. Well, it's our person.
Providing the person.
Right.
It's possible, and as far as the CVS test site, it does not require a doctor's order. You either call CVS or go on the CVS app and schedule an appointment.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, if we could get like just some informational flyers that can go out, just to kind of let people know that it doesn't require, that would be helpful if anything.
I think there is no charge to that. They collect your health insurance information, but there is some way or another, CVS has a contract to state that if you do not have health insurance, they'll bill it a different way.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, you said that this money couldn't be used for replacement of revenue lost. How about expenses incurred, say by the PSA for people not doing a walk-up or either a check, but choose to go online, which has been an expense to the PSA? Not a lost revenue, but an actual expense? Can it be used to offset that?
We believe that that's fine. We're going to try that, because it's clearly not lost revenue. It's enhanced expense, because PSA has covered those online fees. And, you know, some people may think, well, that's a couple bucks here and there. It averages about $7,000 a month to cover those online fees. And it's working like it should. Our foot traffic in the building has been significantly reduced, either through use of the drop locks out front or online. And I think we need to maintain that, because it helps people stay healthy, keeps them out of the building, keeps our guys healthy. So we're going to take a swing at that and try to get that approved, yes, sir.
Thank you. Other items, as we're having the discussion, because we do have some action items under 11 that we need to consider, are there any other items for discussion at this point? With that, we'll move to 11A, a consideration of policy change to match Virginia's Procurement Act requirements. Mr. Hall?
The Procurement Act of the Code of Virginia allows the Commonwealth and its localities to spend up to $100,000 for goods and non-professional services, and up to $80,000 on professional services before a request for proposals is required. Many, if not most, localities follow this threshold, but Henry County does not. This includes the PSA, which follows this threshold, but the Henry County side does not. Our current threshold on the county side for both of these is $20,000. In light of the state of emergency in place regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, Henry County can follow the Commonwealth thresholds as long as the state of emergency is in effect. However, once that state of emergency is rescinded, we would have to go back to our current policy unless we change it. Staff is requesting that the board consider this change on a permanent basis to match the Code of Virginia, and that would require a public hearing that would need to be set for your July 28th meeting. Carol Jones is with the purchasing department, and she is here. And she can clearly tell you, if you wish to hear from her, the issues that it causes in their office when the PSA functions under one set of rules, county functions under the other. But now that we're in a state of emergency, we all function under the same one, and if it goes away, then we don't. But Carol is here, should you want to ask her any specific questions.
Does everyone have enough background on this that they need any additional explanation? In regard to this, and again, we would have to set a public hearing. What is the board's pleasure in regard to setting of a public hearing to take input?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to set a public hearing for the board's July 28th meeting to consider changing county code to match the Commonwealth of Virginia policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. 11B, an award of contract referencing computer hardware and software for the Information Services Department. Mr. Hall?
Staff is asking the board to award the following computer hardware and software contracts to improve telework capabilities of our employees to enable compliance with COVID-19 public health precautions. Number one, the Dell Computer, $302,300. Number two, the Daily Computer, $233,648. And number three, Software House International, for $76,271. Pricing is based on existing county or state contracts for this equipment, and this award is contingent upon the approval of the appropriations of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economy Security Act, or CARES Act, that you're scheduled to consider at your six o'clock session. Yeah, these, this is what we talked about earlier, would enhance our telecommuting possibilities and replace our desktops. And it does include the items for Ridgway that we discussed earlier.
Right. With that, what's the pleasure of the board in regard to the awarding of the contract?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend awarding the contract outlined above, contingency upon the board's approval of the appropriations of the CARES Act. Scheduled to be considered by the board at the 6:00 PM session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. 11C, an additional appropriation referencing the CARES Act funding for registrars. Mr. Hall?
This is more CARES Act money, but this has gone directly to the registrar's office. General Registrar Elizabeth Stone is asking the board to appropriate grant funds in the amount of $65,113 received from the CARES Act. Ms. Stone has indicated that the funds will be used to buy personal protective equipment and sanitizing supplies for use by poll workers in the November election. Ms. Stone would be here, other than the fact that there's a Democratic primary today, and she's managing that.
Great. With that, what is the pleasure of the board in regard to the appropriation of the grant funds?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the appropriation of the grant funds in the amount of $65,113 to assist the general registrar in managing the COVID-19 pandemic locally.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. That takes us to agenda item number 12, informational items. And I'll begin by taking comments from the board, beginning with Mr.
I think we actually need to move back to 11A, fail yours.
Just a point of clarification on 11A that we'd like for you to consider. Some of the projects that Mr. Hall mentioned through CARES Act, such as rebuilding the plumbing in the buildings to be touchless, for example, the price is likely going to be greater than $20,000, but less than $100,000. The way that motion was approved in 11A and the way of current policy, we would still have to bring that item back to you for your approval. And I think it was the original intent for you to grant Mr. Hall, even though the declaration of emergency says he can do it, just to affirm that he can approve those purchases above $20,000, but less than $100,000, so we can spend this money in a more expeditious way.
So do we need to revisit that?
I would recommend a motion granting Mr. Hall the authority to approve expenditures related to the CARES Act without more approval, that are less than $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And as a point of clarification, any expenditures over a certain amount will be?
Formed the board within three days.
Within three days. And any other discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, that's an indication of all the moving parts we can try to deal with over the last couple of days.
Right. Will we take comments from the board, beginning with Mr. Zare?
No, sir.
Dr. Martin?
No, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
No, sir.
Only comment that I would have is I think that there's been a direct impact on information and communication with the support of our local media. And Martinville-Bolton, Henry County Enterprise, thank you all for representing your community well and helping get the word out specifically when a not a lot of, not a lot of time to plan for a public information session was held at the Health Department recently on a very hot day. But you all showed up, you helped get the word out. I think it's having a direct impact. I'll give you, for instance, several citizens have said prior to that public information session, they'd go in, and I won't name a store, and they would see maybe the workers with masks on and about half of the patrons. I've had several mention to me since that time, they go in. The employees of the store, of course, would have the required mask on as required by the employer. And in the high 90 percentage range of patrons that are now donning masks. The communication link back to our citizens, and I would like to thank Mr. Hall and Mr. Wagner, and specifically Matt in the public safety area, of getting the word back also to our Hispanic community. I think that it is a direct result of you all helping to communicate. So I commend members of the media. Thank you for your part in this. Mr. Hall?
I have one thing. The governor had his press conference today at 2:00, and he announced that the Commonwealth will enter Phase 3 on July 1st, which is next Wednesday. We spent three and a half weeks in Phase 2. As part of his remarks today, he still encouraged folks to telework where possible, and also to continue to adhere to the social distance requirement, six feet. Wear your mask, wash your hands. But in Phase 3, social gatherings or gatherings can be up to 250 people. He bumped that up considerably. Retail stores and restaurants can be at 100% capacity, but are expected to maintain social distancing guidelines. For zoos and outdoor entertainment areas, they can do 50% of capacity. Gyms and other workout facilities can be up to 75% capacity. And swimming pools may open as long as they adhere to 75% capacity, and also continue to adhere to all the social distance guidelines. So that will kick into play next Wednesday, July 1st. That's all I have.
Right, thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting. If someone will cite the areas of the Code of Virginia that allow us to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, it would go into closed meeting under Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.23711A1 for discussion of appointees to the Run Oak River Basin Association and the Southern Area Agency on Aging Board, 2.23711A7 for discussion of pending legal matters, 2.23711A3 for discussion of acquisition disposal of real estate, and 2.23711A5 for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. See everyone upstairs in five minutes.
Joey, we come down the country, right? Tangerines and more bread. You know him live. Boy, did you like, did your eyes light up a little bit?
I like tangerines and some bread.
So who was that mess made?
Bob, look bless this time.
Yeah, it does man too, and I've been worried about it.
Boy, three-year term, beginning now and going through 2023, June to the cert, Southern Area Agency on Aging Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. And we have a financial matter in regard to a understanding that we have with the leg of the Martinville-Henry County Chamber of Commerce, the CPEG, as far as a financial item. I'll accept a motion that we fund them with $20,000 coming out of the general fund.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six to zero, Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, any other items coming out of closed meeting? Mr. Hall, are there any other items coming out of closed meeting prior to a six PM session that we need to consider?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any? If not, we'll stand in recess till six PM. ... as agenda item fourteen, we'll have a public hearing on a rezoning application, R dash twenty dash oh two, John A. Compton. We have with us our Director of Planning Zone, Mr. Lee Clark.
Okay, this property is located at twelve seventy-nine Chatham Road, it's in the Collinsville District, and the tax map number is forty-three-two sixty-six, lot C. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of approximately three point seven acres from Commercial District B one to Agricultural District A one. The applicant intends to create an additional building lot and to keep agricultural animals on the property. Following public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at six oh one PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board in this public hearing? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing at six oh one. Mr. Bryant, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would approve this rezoning application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Mr. Hall. Attendant item fifteen, public hearing for rezoning application, R dash twenty dash oh three, Parfa Development Group LLC. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at twenty-two four eighty-five Ailliff Pot Highway, it's in the Horse Pastor District. Tax map number is fifty-eight one forty-seven E. The applicant here is requesting the rezoning of approximately four point three acres from Agricultural District A one to Commercial District B one. The applicant intends to develop a retail store on the property. Following a public hearing, both the planning commission and staff also recommend approval of this request.
I will open the public hearing to receive input at six oh two PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing at six oh two. Ms. Buchanan, I believe this is in your district?
It is. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve the rezoning request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Mr. Hall. That takes us to agenda item number sixteen, public hearing for proposed amendment to the FY nineteen twenty county budget. Mr. Hall?
County has received four million, four hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and three dollars in coronavirus aid relief and economy security, economic security with the CARES Act of two twenty funds. CARES Act provides that the funds may be used to cover costs that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the COVID-19. Item two were not accounted for in the current, in the county's budget, and three were incurred during the period of March first, twenty twenty, through December thirtieth, twenty twenty. The board must hold a public hearing in order to amend the FY twenty budget and appropriate these funds. Whenever a budget is altered by more than one percent of the total budget, a public hearing is required. And because of the declaration of emergency in response to the pandemic, interested persons were encouraged to submit comments by email or phone, we did not receive any of those. Following the public hearing, staff will ask the board to approve an appropriation of four million, four hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, and you have some verbiage with that, specific language for that motion.
Okay, I will open the public hearing to receive input on this at six oh four PM. Is there anyone wishing to address the board during this public hearing? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing at six oh four PM. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you are prepared to offer a motion on behalf of the board with some verbiage that Mr. Hall has provided.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board accept and appropriate the CARES Act grant and authorize the county administrator to make transfers between cost centers as it relates to the CARES Act funding, to allow staff to better respond and address the issues related to the COVID pandemic.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and, and again, the stated amount is four million, four hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Any other discussion? All in favor? It's six zero, Mr. Hall. That takes us to agenda item seventeen, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board on the matters presented by the public? Anyone? Okay. Mr. Hall, do you have any other items of business for the board's consideration?
No, sir.
Board members, do you have any other business?
No, sir.
If not, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Ten note.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's six zero, Mr. Hall. Everyone have a good evening.